And all in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay. We have two items coming out of, I'm sorry, several items coming out of closed session tonight. They're all approval of closed session minutes. That's for February 1st, February 25th, March 11th, March 18th, and April 4th as amended and presented in your board packet tonight. You motion to approve those?
I move to.
Thank you. And a second please?
So yeah.
Thank you. And call the roll please?
Cobb?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. We go into communications tonight. We have some good news reports. Carrie?
Yes, we will start with Mr. Lee. If you can take the podium, thank you. And Betsy's gonna pull up. Thank you, Bets.
Thank you. I have a wide-ranging and a number of good news items for the board, which again just shows how really proud we are and the exceptional students that we have at Glenwood. I'm gonna read a little bit of this, or most of this, because you need to see and hear exactly what has been accomplished here by one of our art students. For the past 90 years, the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards have been an important part, an important opportunity for the students we recognize for their creative talents at regional, national level. The awards have an impressive legacy dating back to 1923 and a noteworthy roster of past winners including Andy Warhol, Sylvia Plath, Truman Capote, Richard Avalon, Robert Redford, and Joyce Carol Oakes. It continues to be the longest-running most prestigious recognition program for creative teams in the United States. Teams in grades 7 through 12 can apply in 28 categories of art and writing for the chance to earn scholarships and have their words exhibited and published. This year, over 230,000 works of art and writing were submitted to the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. Almost 15,000 Gold Key Awards were considered for national awards. Nearly 1,900 Scholastic Award medals were bestowed on the nation's most talented teams, artists, and writers. I'm gonna pause at this time and ask Guan to come up. I'd like to introduce Guan Lu, who was chosen as one of those 1,900 students out of 230,000. Guan. This is Guan's piece of artwork called "The Birdman." She was awarded two categories. She won a National Gold Key Medal for the most outstanding works in the nation. She also won the National American Vision and Voices Medal, and a steam panel of jurors selected the best of five American voices and vision nominees for each region to receive national recognition with the American Vision and Voices Medal. This artwork will be on display at Carnegie Hall in New York City.
This one's hers.
Brand tough?
Yeah.
Okay. Who wants to get a picture of this here?
[laughing] Joe, do you want one with her? Will it show up?
No.
No? Probably not. Wouldn't show up, but, 'cause of the flag.
Thank you, Guan. On the other spectrum, my next award is for, to recognize Coach Blakeman and the basketball team. You followed along this season. The basketball team had an outstanding season. That was a lot of fun to watch, and they had tremendous success, but it's towards the end of the season. And before I bring Coach Blakeman up to introduce his players, it should also be noted that Coach Blakeman was named Coach of the Year, Co-Coach of the Year for the Illinois Basketball Coaches Association for his work with the team this year. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Coach safety work.
There's one for Todd in there too, thanks.
Just real quick, I'd like to thank everybody that made the season possible. What a heck of a ride. Guys, come on in. I don't know where you want them to stand, where I'm standing.
They can stand in front of us, yeah. Yeah, you guys can stand in front of us. They'd rather see you than us anyway. Yeah, just kind of around there, yeah. And everybody can see ya.
But just to thank everybody that made the season possible, from the support of the parents, to the coaching staff behind me, Kyle Crater's missing, and my son David Blakeman all towards the end of the season. Did a tremendous job. The admiration, their support tonight, and it's been all started in the school board to having us here and recognizing us, but these kids are standing before you tonight. Need the utmost respect, the utmost recognition that you possibly get. Halfway through the season, we're sitting there, we didn't quite know, I've been coaching for 20 years, no one's moving more than that. And as we watched it kind of unveil here, we hadn't seen anything like it. We had mono, we had injuries, we, you name it, we had it, man. We were about ready yet. We could've easily, these young men could've easily just cashed in and just finished the season and went on. But we challenged enough the last three weeks once we had everybody back, and they took that challenge and got on the roll, and I tell you, it was a very, very special ride. Very proud of these young men, and very, very proud to be their coach. But again, I can't speak enough, they're thankfully next Monday night, so I don't want to steal my own mojo here, so. The guys, again, great job, coaching staff, everybody. So, this time, I'm gonna announce, if they're here, is Sammy here?
Nope.
Isaac Albrecht. Joel Alexander. Miles McAdams. Peyton Allen. John Young. Tyler Beckerman. Tyler Brown. Carter Wilkie. Josh Matt. Daniel Helm. Drew Perion. Is that everyone? Did I miss anyone? Again, another round of applause. Coach Memmie, Mr. Seth McCoy here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys for coming. Should we could honor you?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congrats. We're very proud of you. Great job.
Great job.
Thanks for coming, Pat. Thanks, Seth. Thanks, Todd.
This will be your next presentation, but one more go.
Oh, okay.
Actually, he has to.
Oh, okay. Well, thank Coach Blakeman. I honestly didn't know how many kids would show up this time of year.
Yeah.
And season being so far over, but it's like you got just about all up here. I have one more, and again, just take to the extent of how far reaching some of our success goes at the high school. I'd like to bring Mr. Ken Carter up, if you would please. Ken Carter was selected as Coach of the Year for the Egyptian Forensic League. The Egyptian Forensic League is made up of all the speech coaches of all the schools south of I-72. Those are a large number of schools, and if you know anything about speech competition, it's kind of a grinding, difficult thing. And Mr. Carter probably spends more Saturdays at speech contests than most of our winter coaches. And it's not just for a two or three hour event, it's all day long. So, there's an awful lot involved in it, and Mr. Carter's always done a fantastic job of running the team. This recognition comes from his peers within the Egyptian Forensic League, which is just a title for that particular area. So, it's a great award in the sense that his peers are recognizing for what he's done. I think it's all should be noted that because of his leadership, his team at the latest IJET competition was named Sportman of the Year for their group as well. So, they'll be recognized and receive a banner for that. So, Mr. Carter, I thought I'd receive this plaque, but I thought I'd bring it with us and show them what you've earned for your outstanding work as the Coach of the Year. This is like recognizing you as well.
Sleep, sleep. Thanks, Ken. Congratulations. Thank you.
Next, we have Ball Chatham Cafeterias, an award for them.
Kudos to all of our kitchen staff, and for the, all of the district cafeterias have received the 2012 Gold Award from the Sangamon County Department of Public Health, which is a very high standard, and it's presented to food service establishments that have demonstrated commitment to food safety, which is, you know, absolutely critical for student safety. And we just, we have some of the very best kitchen staff, and the principals would tell you themselves how hardworking they are and how dedicated they are to, you know, our students and their health, as well as their safety in terms of food safety. So, we appreciate all that they do, and congrats to them for that high honor.
Next, our show choir.
This one, actually, if, I'll put you on the spot. And talk, let Lisa talk a little bit about where we are with our show choir waiver.
Well, the temporary waiver has passed through the legislature, and it's been approved by both houses. So, we are, our school district is set for the next couple of years, and then we have one more waiver we can apply for. As far as the actual legislation to make this a permanent waiver, I have been spending an awful lot of time with the Capitol lately, probably speaking with senators, trying to gather support with it, and some of the senators have had some interesting changes of heart that I've been glad to see, and other senators have not. So, it's still a process, a much longer, more complicated process than I thought, but still, we're still plugging along.
Thank you. This temporary waiver allows us the two years of our waiver that we've written in the past so that our students can take, you know, like I said, we've often found that students end up taking another AP course or another academic course on top of their show choir course, and that allows them the freedom to be able to do that. This one only allows us two more years, and then we have one more opportunity to write another waiver, and then we're, our hands are tied essentially. So, that's why it's so critical to explore a more permanent option, which Lisa has spearheaded for us.
Well, statewide, and that's one of the things that we keep talking, you know, when I meet with senators, they say, "Well, this is only for your school." And I said, "This isn't for my school, this is for show choir programs statewide." And we just keep working.
And there are a lot of caveats that they put on that, too. It's gotta be a four.
Four taught by a certified teacher and a four credit.
Yeah.
And some of the initial concerns was these kids are missing PE, and so the discussion then is, well, this is actually just as rigorous, actually based on the regular PE curriculum. Some could argue more rigorous than the regular PE class, but there's a lot of differences of opinion out there, so.
Sure. Yeah.
Next, I, we have 5-7, and this is an opportunity for visitors to address the school board concerning any agenda topic. Anybody wish to address the board this evening? Okay, all right. Move on. Mr. Scott up here, please? For the record, your name and the five-minute timer, sir. Okay?
My name is Rob Scott. I live in the Fox Creek subdivision. I wanted to take a moment to express my appreciation for the back and forth of information that has gone on in the last month. Clearly, I've been present and addressed the topic of redistricting the Fox Creek subdivision several times. When I began this process, I indicated to you that part of my dilemma was that I had no basis of knowledge regarding why this was being done, and whether or not, in fact, it was a necessity. Since that time, I'm very happy to say that the information has flowed very freely and has allowed, at least for me, a better understanding of this process. I, by far, am no expert on it, nor do I want to be, frankly. But I do appreciate the opportunity to learn and understand how this is done. I also want to take a moment to thank some of the people who I know have taken the time to understand not just my position, because although it's not intentional, I believe, there are some other people who share some of the concerns that I expressed. I've been informed that there is going to be a change in the proposal this evening, and that is apparently upcoming on the agenda. I think it is a credit to any organization or any individual when they are willing to reconsider information or facts that they have looked at in making their decisions. I've learned, actually, from the day that I got married, that unfortunately, I'm not always right. It's been a hard lesson, but it is a fact. I don't think any of us can be all of the time, but I don't think that's any indication of our intent or our desire. This has certainly been a learning process for me, and I appreciate that opportunity. I would have to point out several people who took, frankly, in my opinion, above and beyond in addressing some of the concerns that were expressed. Ms. Weitzel spent over a half hour on the phone with me, of her own time, which she clearly was not required to do. I found her to be a patient listener and a sympathetic ear, and I greatly appreciate that. Mr. Cobb, Mr. Petermeyer also indicated or acknowledged the information that I presented, and I greatly appreciate that. I think all, and again, I don't presume to speak for other people, but I think all I wanted, and I think anybody wanted, was an opportunity to understand and to be heard and to perhaps reexamine things and see what was truly necessary. I do not for a minute doubt that everybody has a desire to act in the best interest of all of the children involved in this. And it's clearly obvious that my opinion is that this upcoming proposal does just that. I would just finish and conclude my remarks by, again, thanking you for taking the time. I do appreciate it, as I'm sure every parent involved in this does, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else wish to address the board tonight?
My name's Rose Erner, and I am a resident of Fox Creek State. We moved here in 2012 from Springfield, District 186. We had a horrible experience with District 186, so much as we went to the school board. They didn't want to work with our oldest son, who was having problems with learning. They wanted to medicate him from his teacher. Put your child on medication. And after about five times of her telling me that, my husband looked at her and said, "If you want to leave this room, I highly suggest you don't say the word medication again." So, from there, we went to the principal. The principal did nothing. From there, we had another disagreement with the teacher and wanting our child medicated. After that, we went to the school board, and from there, you obviously can see me, I'm standing here in Chatham, we moved. It was move or put our kids in private school, and we chose to move here. We chose Fox Creek for Glenwood Elementary. We understand that, you know, there are a lot of decisions in life that we all have not the best control out of, and it is out of our control with what you choose for our children. I understand that there is a new proposal that is going to be put out tonight. However, 56 kids, a very small number, very small. I understand that it's going to cost money. I understand that you can increase our taxes again, or you can do other things, build modular buildings, have something. There's a proposal, I heard, that now you want to possibly just move K through 2, and then leave the rest at Glenwood Elementary. Next year, I will have a first grader, and I will have a fourth grader. That would put me taking my kids from one school and then going to another school. It would separate them. They will be separated from their cousins that go to the same school for one year. One year. I was just at military training, I was gone for two weeks. In that timeframe, my kindergartner, Miss, who can vouch for Gavin, acted out. He acted out because it was changed. It was changed that I was gone for two weeks. Might be a small number to everybody, but to my children, that's a big deal, okay? And who worked with them? Who was there with him by his side so he can go in and cool off with the principal? She will call me, and we will talk. I don't know how they're gonna react by getting moved for one year. How would you like to be moved for just one year? It's a lot to take into consideration, and I understand completely, it's a very, very difficult decision, and it has to be a lot of weight on your shoulders. But 56 kids is so small. I am sure that there are so many different options that you guys can have. Please put on your thinking caps, and let's make sure that they can stay where they're at. Comfortable, we're all resilient, but you can't ask kids to move for a year, make friends, and then move back. It's very difficult. Thank you.
Thank you, Rose. Is there anyone else wish to address the board tonight? Miss Maupin, come on up.
I just want to say thank you for taking the time.
Could you have your name, please?
Oh, sorry. My name is Misty Ware, and I live in Fox Creek, and I have a kindergartner who attends GDS currently.
Okay.
And I'd like to speak to you all tonight about some of my concerns, not just for my son, but many other children. I also want to speak to you about something I'm very passionate about, which are children who have special needs, with any kind of special needs, IDPs, anxiety disorders, behavioral disorders. There are numerous disorders that little children of all ages do have. And as a parent and an educator, I know what a transition will do to a child who has any of those disorders, and how hard it is for them to adapt to a new school, a classroom. These children are gonna be just moved to a new school, and that sounds simple, but you actually think about what that transition word means, they're going to have to face a new building with strangers in their classrooms, strangers in the staff. Everywhere they look, there will be strangers. And not only that, but some children will just easily adapt. And these children who have anxiety disorders or other disorders, it's going to take them a lot more time to settle in, and they're not going to be able to just make friends as easily as their peers are. So, while their peers are adapting and adjusting just fine to their teacher, their classroom, and learning, these other students are gonna fall behind potentially because they're struggling in other areas, and they're not adjusting well. And I know that because I have a child who has anxiety disorders, and it really takes a toll on any kind of change. We just put Hardwood in our floor in our home for six months, he's cried about it. He still does not like it, we're slowly adjusting, but that is such a small change. And to move him to a new school and any number of children who have disorders similar to his, it's really gonna throw him off his learning pattern. And my goal for him is to make his learning, a successful learning experience. I want him to love to learn. I don't want him to find it hard, I don't want him to struggle. I want him to enjoy school, and I want that for all of those children who have these disorders. But I also want you to take in consideration, and you probably already have, many of these children go to daycare centers, and if they are moved to a new school zone, the buses won't be able to transport them back to their normal daycare centers because it's not in the same school zone. So, they're going to have to adapt to a new school and a new daycare as well, and that's a lot of stress for children and parents at home. And I just wanted to let you know that these children, they mean the world to me. I've been to work with several of them, and it's really special when you work with these children who struggle, and then all of a sudden, you see that aha moment, like they're getting it, it's clicking, they're succeeding, and that's what you want, they're meeting these goals. But I don't really know for sure if we take, uproot them and make their learning environments unstable, I'm not really sure that we'll be able to see those moments. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to? I think so.
Hi, my name's Emily Vivian, and I also live in Fox Creek Estates. Moved here about a year ago, and I just wanted to say that today was the first day that I saw the revised recommendations, and just wanted to make a couple notes. I know that Option 1 and Option 2, and set forth on the paper that I have, have a financial cost of zero, and Option 3 does have a financial cost of a little bit more than that. I think that's a little, I'm not sure that I would say that there's probably zero costs involved with 1 and 2, because I think, you know, if we split kindergarten through second grade, stays at G, or goes to CES, and third and fourth stay at GES, you're gonna have buses coming back to the same neighborhood to go to two different schools. So, I do think there are probably some costs involved. But regardless of the cost, I just wanted to say that there are also 56 kids whose lives would be uprooted and have to go through a transition. So, although financially, it might not make the most sense when you look at everybody else's lives that are gonna be affected, and it's not just going to be the kids either, it'll be parents and siblings and daycare workers and employers, and so there's a lot more to take into account than just the financial aspect of it, and I just, I just wanted to ask that you would consider that as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we'll move along. Thank you, everyone, for your comments, we appreciate it. We will have a presentation later on in the meeting. Moving on to our consent agenda items, 6-1 through 6-10. Is there anybody who wish to point anything out for individual consideration? If not, I need a motion then to approve Consent Agenda 6-1 through 6-10, as presented in your board packet tonight?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Alan, in a second, please.
Sure.
Thank you, Rick. Betsy, call the roll, please.
Harley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Petermeyer?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cobb?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Yes. Next, move on to old business, and this is a report on the additions for Glenwood, Ball, Glenwood Elementary, Ball Elementary, and GIS. And you have some information in front of you tonight on those, on the additions.
Dave, do you want me to switch computers? Are you wanting to run this from your computer?
I'm sorry.
Do you want me to, do you wanna run this?
I don't think we need to run this. I think it'll be okay.
Good evening. I'd like to introduce our architect for GDS, Dave Leonetti. He's gonna shake a few moments and brief us on the current plan for Glenwood Elementary.
Thank you, Dave.
Ball, Glenwood Elementary, Ball Elementary, and G.I.S. And you have some information in front of you tonight on those, on the additions.
Dave, do you want me to switch your computers? Are you wanting to run this from your computer?
I'm sorry.
Do you want me to, do you want to run this?
I don't think we need to run this.
I think it'll be okay.
Good evening. I'd like to introduce our architect for GES, Dave Leonetti. He's going to shake a few moments and brief us on the current plan for Glenwood Elementary.
Thank you, Dave. Oh, this is, yeah, here we go.
Right there.
I'm trying to be brief, because I can tell you have a pretty big agenda tonight here, and not trying to skirt past anything. The additions to the Glenwood Elementary School, and if there are specific questions from the board, our whole team is here. Introduce some of the members, Gary Plack and Matt Slager here from Hanson Engineers. We have Corey Hope and Greg Doolan from O'Shea Builders, the construction managers, and they can answer some specific questions. You need to know there are going to be additions to three academic wings, there's going to be expansion to the existing main parking lot, there's going to be a new playground that's constructed at Unit A. This is 14 total classrooms totaling 19,575 square feet. As you'll see, we'll go through some slides real quick here, we're going to match all of the existing classroom configurations, so there's nothing new or different, it's simply an extension of the same grade levels at each wing, A, C, and D. There are alternate bid packages here, we're hoping if the construction climate is good, to add these into what's not in the original scope of work that was defined, but one will be adding retractable bleachers in the gym, the other will be installing, and you'll see on one of the drawings here, a New North Drive drop-off, everybody is familiar with, the issue of the traffic that backs up from GES during drop-off and pickup, all the way back to Plummer. So we're going to hope to get good business results to add that in. And number three is a parking lot, a sleeve of park between GES and the high school. Real quickly, this is just for information, addition on Unit A, addition on C and D, here's where the addition's going to be on the parking lot. Quick model showing you, you know, this is all the existing building you're seeing here, and then each of the additions, four classrooms on C and D, and then we have six classrooms on the pre-K, K wing. Same thing here, it's a quick floor plan of each, four classrooms in C and D, six at Unit A. Each will have also a bank of bathrooms accompanying each, partially because travel distance, if we've done these additions, is going to be, I'm sure that any teachers here would tell me, it's going to be way too long to make that utilized successfully. So here are each C and D, four classrooms, again with a sleeve of bathrooms on each side. Again, a quick model, this happens to be Unit A, but just wanted to show you how we get involved with using called building information modeling to look at the buildings, how they will be extended on. And my apologies for having man this slide, look, this was my bad use of technology, but the existing parking's here, we're simply going to like, take it, flop it, get another , I think it's about 100 cars, is that about right? Yeah, it's right. Under that parking area. And then this shows you, and again, my apologies, as you know, this is where the drive comes in now, to the parking. So the alternate bid, again, this is, we're going to take this bid in hopes of getting good cost figures, will be for this drive, this connecting drive from the loop road, a cul-de-sac drop-off over at K, pre-K and K, and then a connector to come back through here. What this is for is hope to allow another section of traffic, and we're thinking about 50 to 60 cars, is what we've calculated with our civil engineer, to take them off of that backup. I mean, if you've been there, it goes all the way, all the way back to Plummer, it can be quite a problem when buses are trying to come back and do their loop, and have to fight for space to come through. So that is just my quick.
Dave, you also had a, the other parking lot was there too, between the high school and the?
Oh, I'm sorry, you were correct, you were correct. Sorry for being polite. Let's go to the next. Yes, this is alternate bid number three, Jim, and one of the things we thought, there's a lot of earthwork involved in this whole piece here, and a lot of it gets, because there's this existing loop road here, which is the high school's over here, that that is going to get done, so we're hoping that that can slip in as cost-effectively, because it doesn't take a lot of extra work other than the paving. So again, alternate bid, number one will be bleachers in the gym, number two will be all of this, and number three will be this sleeve of parking. Good topic, thank you. And I don't know what next we want to cover, Dave, we can answer your questions.
Any questions?
Greg's going to talk about the new classrooms, we'll have the geothermal.
Yes, yes, good question. Now let's go back, on that site utilization plan, which is probably a good reference point, right here, and Matt, our engineer, intrepid here, you can point this out, this purple area here, John, that's going to be the geothermal field that feeds this addition, this is the geothermal field that will feed these two, right there. Yes, Greg. Other questions?
Anything else?
Great.
Thanks, Sue.
You're welcome.
Dave, you have the cost up there.
We're just going to get back to the board, John.
I'm great dealing with O'Shea Builders, and we're the construction manager for this project. Basically, what you'll see here for Glenwood Elementary School is a pretty extensive cost breakdown for the school construction. This is what we call line item breakdown, kind of by individual trade or individual section within the estimate. The, if you look through each of the sections, which we don't need to do tonight, you'll have a pretty good idea of the breakdown of the overall cost of the project. At the bottom, which is probably most important, is where we come up with the total cost for the overall project, for this project. We have three projects we're looking at, Dave is working on this from his firm, and then we'll go through the other two after Mike has had a chance to present his design on that. I'm sorry, you can go back here in the back room. But these are the total costs for the project. Important to note, this also, these costs also include a contingency. Yeah. So the contingency is added into that total estimate of $4.8 million. Contingency is going to be used for, it's a contingency, so it's used for during, things during construction as they come up, hopefully we don't have to spend that money. Right now, we're running a little bit over on this project as far as being over budget. Within that contingency, that overage is still absorbed within that $338,000 contingency. So at this point, overall, the budget looks fine with that contingency factor added in there. You'll also see a contingency in the next two projects as we get into those. I think it's, again, very important that those are in there. Just to give you an update on where we are with this project right now, this project is out for bid, we have a pre-bid meeting that is tomorrow, it bids on May 9th, and we'll be opening bids at that time, to, have a lot of interest in the project, which is very good. This particular project is a lot of masonry, so we're reaching out to as many masonry subcontractors as we can that are qualified to do the work. As Dave said, it's a similar construction to the existing schools, we have masonry interior walls and masonry, brick masonry exterior. Any particular questions on cost at this point?
Yeah, Greg, I got the very first one, management and supervision?
Yes.
About $249,000.
Yes.
Wouldn't that fall under the construction manager?
That does fall under the construction manager, that is the project management cost, supervision cost onsite as well, and a lot of the general conditions, such as there's some trailer costs, different things like that.
So that's in addition to the 4.7%?
No, it's within the 4.7%. Oh, that's in addition to the 4.7%? Yes, it is. Yes, the markup is on the cost of construction, and that's considered a cost of construction. And any, anyone that would, any of the board that would need some additional breakdown on any of these numbers, we have that, prepare that for you anytime. It's important to note that this was taken at the design development stage, we're now in the construction document stage. We haven't seen any noticeable changes from design development to construction documents, but now we're out for bid, we actually moved this project up a week to bid ahead of the other school projects that we have, so our estimating is catching up with the drawings at this point.
You know, related to Steve's question, would you explain to me the difference, or what is included in the management and supervision that is different than the 4.7%?
Yeah, the management and supervision is, like I said, the cost of construction, so basically, we have project managers, we have project engineers, we have our construction superintendent that's onsite overseeing the construction, and that labor is typically what you call general requirements labor, so that's the management of the project itself. The overhead and profit, the 4.7%, is basically the construction management fee or the profit of the construction, of the overseeing of the construction.
So management and supervision may not necessarily be O'Shea people?
Typically, they are O'Shea people. The management and supervision aspect, all of the other work, pretty much, except for reimbursables, for instance, some temporary heat and a few other things, is by subcontractors, not part of O'Shea.
When you say supervision, is there going to be somebody on site all the time?
Yes, sir.
Anything else on that one? Nope, okay.
At this time, I'd like to introduce Mike Zeller, thanks for giving us an update on both Ball Elementary School and Glenwood Intermediate School, he'd be followed by Craig Doolan also.
Hey, I think you all have some handouts in front of you, I think I would like to start with the white piece of paper that, I'm sorry, I don't have a slide for that, but it's called project schedule. We have been involved in doing two of your additions, one at Ball, and one at G.I.S., but we've also been involved in about 15 other different projects that are included in Phase 1. And this is just kind of a synopsis of where we are with those projects. The first, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 projects have been bid, and we are under contract with those. Tonight, there's two more projects that we're seeking approval for, one is an HVAC project at Ball Elementary, and the other one is some asbestos abatement work at three different schools. We have two more projects that are going to bid, real quickly, actually, three more, you can count the playgrounds, they're coming up soon, and of course, you know, what we've been talking about here tonight, the building additions, of course, we're involved at Ball and G.I.S., they're going to bid the middle of May and the end of May. There's three projects that we still need to complete and get out to bid, and they are some parking lot work at Ball, some exterior work at this building, and an emergency project that Dave, I think, is going to get by a little later, at Chatham Elementary, the restroom facilities. I'm going to, I'll get back to the others. The color drawings that I have tonight, I'm going to show you just a few slides on This first slide is just a simple, simple foreplan of the building addition that's going to happen at Ball Elementary School, I think you saw a similar plan to this last December. The area that we're talking about, this building's only going to get about a 6,000 square foot addition on it, it's at the south end, it's going to replace the old 1926 building, and it's located in that area right here. New City Road is out here, and a long drive along the west side of the building is along It involves about four classrooms, some office space, and workroom space, a very, very small addition, but it will replace the oldest building footprint that you have in your district right now. This is an appearance, both from the south elevation that you would see from New City Road, as well as the west elevation. The character of the building is going to take on the sloping metal roof appearance that the, that part of the 1992 addition has, so it's going to look, blend in, look very similar to that. This is the addition at G.I.S., the yellow kind that demarks the new portion of the addition, little bit larger addition, it's about 11,000 square feet total, consisting of a relocation of the administrative office area, a small classroom, and some other ancillary office areas with a large center commons area that will be open to the, to the existing school commons area. Phase 2 work that's going to happen not this summer, but next summer, will involve some additional work in the old administrative areas, some work in the kitchen, adding a classroom or two at the end of the gymnasium, some work up in the old industrial arts area of the building, adding a few classrooms in there. That is Phase 2 work, it's not part of this, it'll happen not this summer, but next summer. An outside appearance, we're trying to blend in with the appearance of the existing intermediate school, it's going to have the same brick that the intermediate school has on it, it's going to have a metal fascia system that goes around the building. We're also thinking about in Phase 2, improving the appearance of the rest of the fascia around the building by possibly painting, if you've driven by it and looked at it lately, it's starting to fade pretty, pretty much. This is kind of an aerial view of what we're talking about as far as the footprint of this building. It's going to have a canopy that goes out to the parking lot. Next phase of work includes some repair work in the, in this parking lot, as well as some of the other schools. As I mentioned, I think there's about 15 projects that we currently have included in Phase 1, there's a total of, I think, somewhere around 40 projects altogether, that most of the rest of them are going to happen in Phase 2. Are there any questions?
Mike, on this sheet, you talk about playground renovation at Ball and at Chatham, and maybe Greg, when you look, I don't see anything in the money part of it, and also, I thought if we were going to do the pour and play, is what it's called, for those schools, were we going to be doing that at G.I.S., are they going to receive any playground renovations as well?
At Ball, at Ball Elementary, at Chatham Elementary, and G.I.S., all three of those are getting what we're trying to, we're trying to equalize the amount of play area in all three of the schools to be compatible with what's happening at G.E.S. That project, as a matter of fact, is just out to bid, it's going to bid in another couple of weeks, but it will be getting that safety surfacing, that permeable safety surfacing that you have at G.E.S. They will also be getting some new playground equipment, replacing some of the old, and recertifying all of the equipment on all of your, both old and new, obviously, at those locations.
So then, the sheet that we have with pricing on it, those are for bids that have come through already, and this is what we're still?
We'll leave the top, the ones with the X's on the top that have already been bid, and I might add, currently, we are approximately $80,000 to the good on all of our budgets for all those projects, and that adds to where we think we are with all of the addition projects, it's in addition to that, so. But you never quite know, so far, we've been real lucky, and pricing has come in very favorable. So far, we've been real lucky, and pricing has come in very favorable for the projects.
Any other questions? Can you talk about the budget done? Is that?
Switch over to the budget sheets for these, for Ball, first of all. And basically, this, this is about, I'm sorry, if I wanted to go back into the alternates, we could look at those. This is for the bleacher alternate. I forgot about this for the elementary school, Glenwood Elementary School. This is approximately $31,000. If you go to the next alternate, this was the additional driveway turnaround area. That's approximately $600, $2,000.
And Greg, can you explain that that's mostly because of the dirt work, too, in additions?
Yeah, there's, there's quite a bit of concrete paving there, as well as some site lighting, but quite a bit of dirt work that goes along with that. If we have board approval, we're gonna try to get as much as we can of that dirt work and roadway work done before school starts. If we can have the weather, they'll cooperate with us. So that's what we're gonna try to do with that one. The, this would be the parking lot, this next section would be the parking lot component, which Dave had mentioned, between the drive and the high school drive, which would be several spaces of concrete paving.
I have a question. You said, at this point, we're over-budget on G.E.S. That is excluding the alternate bids 1, 2, and 3?
That's correct. And I have a summary sheet I'll show you at the very end, which will kind of summarize all of that in total. Okay. This is for Ball Elementary School. This is, is the cost estimate for that school as well. If you, if you're to go through all these costs, there's a lot of, it's obviously smaller projects with a lot of smaller components, smaller costs associated with it, but still about the same amount of trades and the same amount of breakdown. So the total project here is about $1.6 million, and that includes the demolition, the site work, and the new construction associated with the new additions.
Here, we've got 10% on the contingency as opposed to 8%, just we don't know what's there.
Yeah, the reason why we have, it's kind of the flip of the coin on how you do the contingency. In this case, we have a smaller project, we have a little bit bigger contingency because the overall amount is smaller. So with the bigger school, we have 8% over that large of a budget is a little bit bigger cookie jar to work with.
Sure. Okay. Anything?
This is the next, the budget for Glenwood Intermediate School. You can kind of see the overall cost, again, looks very similar. We do a very detailed takeoff. A lot of the takeoff that we do is within our own team estimating. We also work, reach out to local subcontractors and suppliers to get pricing. Obviously, this is all subject to the bid market as we get our bids in, which we hope will actually help the overall cost. And if we go to the last summary slide, if you look at this portion right here, which is the main school projects, the difference between what our budget is with the contingency on these projects, that's where we're showing the 186. That's not going, it's not going into the whole 186, it's cutting into the contingency 186 at this point. But if you look at the overall, with the other two schools being ahead of the game, we're actually, with those three projects together, we're actually to the good $161,000. Again, that's with all the contingency money in there as well. Of course, these are all pre-bid. These are all pre-bid, these, that's correct, pre-bid. These are not guaranteed maximum price numbers, these are pre-bid. Okay, if we go to the bottom, we're to look at the Glenwood Elementary alternates, and that's where we have the bleachers, the roadway, and the additional parking area. Obviously, we, original budget was $45,000 for the bleachers, and we had an additional $200,000 improvements, and then presented the ideas to the board about increasing the scope for the roadway and the turnaround and the additional parking. So that's where the numbers fall in right now, according to the budget numbers that we had plugged in from when we started the project. Overall, we'll see where that, where those numbers come in, and the board can decide what we'd like to do with that. Okay. Any additional questions?
I guess not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Dave? Okay. This is for, this is for information only. Bids are when, when are the first bids going out for G.E.S.?
May 9.
May 9? May 9, and so it'll be up for a May board meeting, I assume?
Yes.
Okay.
Jim, can I add something?
Yeah, sure.
Dave Murphy's here, and I think Mike Zeller will back me up on this. During the campaign, there was some criticism of our facilities management, the last three or four years, at least the four years that Alan, Lisa, Linda, and I've been on this school board, and Dave Murphy came on about the same time, too. And I have to say that Mr. Murphy has probably saved this district hundreds of thousands of dollars with the in-house work and with organizational skills that he brought to this district. And in the four years that I've been, I'm grateful that you've been running our facilities here the last four years, and I want to give you compliments. And I know, to some extent, we kind of inherited a district that was a little bit behind in terms of facility maintenance, and also in terms of facility size, but I think, Dave, you've been a tremendous asset to this district. And again, I'll say that with Mike, because Mike can back us up.
I agree with you 100%.
Glad you said that.
I agree.
Which means you can never retire. They'll push you around. He says legally, you can't tell me that.
Any other, any other questions on this board? Move on. If not, we will move, we'll move on to 9.1, which is our elementary boundary changes. Jill?
Betsy, can you pull up?
Another dedicated person who works tirelessly to make sure things work.
Yeah, pull up the, yeah, pull up. Well, last month, you gave me the focus to specifically continue to study it. And so specifically, you asked me to study the art on a cart, modular buildings, serving parents, and talking with PTO, and Betsy and Carrie's help. We've done all of that. And so you can see that we did send out a survey. We don't get a great, great big response, but of the G.E.S. parents, you can see the survey results of 12%. And then if you keep scrolling and pay particular attention to keeping the boundaries the same, keeping the current student-teacher ratio, some of the big items of both surveys, because we surveyed both Ball and Chatham parents, we only got about 5.8% response there. What came across was that the current student-to-teacher ratio is very strongly felt that that needs to continue to be as close as we can to the recommended caps, and we should keep the music and art curriculum the same and consistent among the three schools. We did ask the question if we would have any voluntary transfers. We had two, but they didn't follow up with the next step that they needed to do. And at this time, modulars undergoing that expense should not be undertaken by the district. So I will tell you that when we looked at the survey results and everyone who commented on to the survey and to, and back to Betsy individually, everyone is very proud of their schools. I mean, every parent is very, very proud of their schools, and that's something for our district that we need to keep in mind. Everyone loves their schools. So there are three options up here. We are recommending option three, but I want to go through option one. That would be that we would go ahead and move the boundaries. The soft costs is it's an impact to the students moving the buildings. Option two, you're looking at about 25 students, that if we kept the third and fourth graders at G.E.S., that creates some issues dividing families because you have different start and end times for your elementary schools at this time. Because CES and Ball are on the 7:45 to 2:45 schedule, where G.E.S. is on the 8:30 to 3:30, 3:25 start time. And then option three would be that we would do something unique and freeze enrollment. And so what we need to do is we need to make sure that we have just five sections of kindergarten versus six. This year, we have six right now. This will allow us to have an extra room for second grade, because second grade numbers continue to grow, and we're already over the cap, so we need six sections there. And then fourth grade, we do need to add an additional section there because we're already over the cap as well. So that would allow us to move a special ed room to the lounge. And when you looked at the lounge, and this came out at a PTO meeting about what are our, you know, what legally we have to do if we have to move a classroom. Luckily, when we reviewed it, and I talked to our special ed attorney, there's qualifications for that classroom, and we meet all of them, so we could make this move. But it depends on the size, the quality, the location, the instructional appropriateness, the accessibility, lighting, and ventilation. And because it's a new building, and the square footage meets, and the location's near the office, and it's accessible, they need all those qualifications. So there is gonna be an additional cost to do some of this, and there's about a $15,000 cost for additional support staff. We need additional staff to cover in the cafeteria and playgrounds. So those will be part-time positions, probably, you know, two 15-hour employees, and there will be some retrofitting, you know, furniture. We'll try to do everything we can to do it out of storage, because we have, Mr. Murphy and I have toward storage facilities, and we do have desks and chairs and things in storage that we can outfit that classroom. The big thing is you have to keep in mind, this is a one-year problem. Initially, we thought that the construction was gonna take two years, but thanks to all of you, you can speed that up. And so, but I do, the only way that we would get around this issue is if we went to grade level attendance standards. That's the only way around this issue. And we decided here to go that we were gonna get away from that. So our recommendation is option three. I will say that we're gonna have to continue to work with our realtors in making sure that they don't say, hey, this is in this boundary, because we're gonna be capping that enrollment, and so when you do have new families come in, they may not be going to G.E.S., just like they're not. Some of them are not now. So we will continue to cross boundary. Jim Lovell is also, guys work very hard on this as well as team. So this is our recommendation. Questions?
I have two questions, and they're kind of related. The boundary, is this boundary as permanent as we can hope? I mean, if it's not gonna change once the, I mean, two or three years, once the additions are on?
Well, we have 14 additional classrooms being constructed at G.E.S., so I think that will help. But, I mean, you make a good point that the problem is, you know, they can build houses a lot faster than we can build onto a building.
Right.
And it just, for example, and I gotta correct some information, so I'm glad you mentioned that, Toronto Terrace that I reported would be like 16 to 18 family single lots. It's not single lots, it's multi-occurrence complex. So that means there are more families going to Ball Elementary.
Is that in Ball?
That's in Ball.
That's actually in Ball. So we'll need to keep an eye on that as well. You're gonna, we're just gonna have to keep an eye on every subdivision. I mean, I drove around Saturday just looking at the number of houses, and, you know, Jim has shared a lot of information on who, you know, how many, how many K through 4 post-subdivision, and you just, there's a lot more houses than, I mean, having kids sometimes.
But the hope would be, we have a kid that, I mean, they're already gonna change come fifth grade anyway. The hope would be is that you've got kids, that they wouldn't change boundaries within their scope, but in their time at a particular grade school, I mean, that would be the hope. Then the other question is, the families that are, the new move-in family that gets, who's in the G.E.S. but gets frozen out and has to go to, will they stay then at Jetland?
No, we would try to move them the following year.
We are gonna try this year. To their home school.
We would give them a choice if they want to provide their own transportation, but the following year, they would be moved. And that's how I've explained it to the parents that we're currently doing now. Betsy, can you open up the second document? You know, enrollment is, you know, and I talked to a few people, enrollment goes up and down. For example, when we, and I told the story today, when we, when the city of Springfield built the CWLP plant, that brought influx of new families to our district for two years. I remember several parents saying, we're here for only two years because my husband has to work at the plant for two years to build it, and then we move again. So, you know, we had like 30 extra kids that, you know, showed up at the door. So those are the things that, you know, you just have to be ready for. This is a grid that will show you Ball, Chatham, and Glenwood with some recommendations for additional teachers. Just as of today, I had, or as of Friday late, I had a parent email me and say, I'm moving from Ball to G.E.S. I'll, my child will finish at Ball, and I'll take him to a bus stop, but then he needs to attend G.E.S. So, I mean, just, you know, things change like that because they bought a house, so. But you can scroll down, and so, you know, you have one column that has school transfers and potential retentions, and the principals have worked hard on this, along with their secretaries and teachers. You know, we've, anybody that the teacher has been in contact with, that a parent has made, you know, made the comment, hey, we may move. We, you know, have asked a lot of those that are potential move-outs, very little of them are very confirmed number, they're not very solid. There's maybe one of that six there that we see in second grade, for example, at Glenwood Elementary, that's a confirmed number for sure. So, I mean, those are just potential, we can't say for sure. I mean, the principals will continue to follow up, but it's how we transfer paperwork to a different school. Those are not firm numbers. So.
So I think to answer your question, John, this is gonna be a constant problem.
Yes.
It's gonna be a moving target, and we need to minimize the impact on the kids as much as we possibly can. But it's gonna be a moving target, just, and, didn't you say that?
And we have available space. We'll have available space at G.E.S. We have, we have it at CES. And with the additional space at Ball, we'll have that space. So we should be okay for a while. For a while.
Well, didn't you say that they've already staked out that new subdivision just north of our property on Gordon Drive? It's already staked out, and over 100 houses in there?
104.
104 houses. So.
Yeah, I'll point out that we've got a large school district. We're not just Chatham, we're Ball-Chatham. We have Springfield addresses, we have Chatham, we have, we have Rochester addresses, we have, we go to E. Curran, Gerard, I don't know. We've got such a big, and we have no control over the housing.
Right.
Or the zoning that gets done. We just, the school district doesn't. We just deal with those consequences.
And we're fortunate that we are growing. I mean, you know, many districts are closing schools, and, you know, I think we're extremely fortunate that we are growing because people want to be in, you know, in the district, which is a great challenge for us, but it's definitely one that we are thankful for because we can continue to offer great programs rather than face the challenge of closing schools.
Jill, that $15,000 in staff, is that a cost that we would be incurring the following year?
I would say yes, because you would have those additional 14 classrooms, so yes.
So, so we're just hiring people a year early?
Mm-hmm.
Would we incur some of those same costs, no matter which option we chose, just because we would be putting kids in other buildings and have to?
Maybe, I mean, the principals would have to really look at.
Sure.
It's really tight. I went over and watched the lunch cafeteria at Glenwood Elementary, and they need some help. Yeah, especially when you're adding a six-section.
Sure.
I mean, it's, it's hard, K1, too.
Any other questions or comments, other than, I mean, I think the whole board would like to thank Jill, you, and the entire staff for putting this together in a month. I know we've had a lot of conversations between you and me and Carrie and other board members here about, you know, the different options and what we wanted to do, how we wanted to do it, and getting the buses taken care of, and Tammy over, you know, changing daily what you got to deal with over at, over there at Glenwood, too. So I just wanna, from the board, I just want to thank everybody for the dedication. And I want to thank the parents, too, for their dedication to their kids and dedication to this district, because without to this district, because without parents like you, we wouldn't be in the situation we're in. Good situation, we're in, not the bad one. But it's, and to kind of stretch the board and stretch the district also, because I think Mr. Scott said earlier, we don't, nobody has all the right decisions. It's kind of a, it's kind of a melding of all of the information that we've got that we try to put together and come up with what is educationally sound and what is going to be best for all of the kids in the district. And so it's been a work in progress probably for the last two or three months now, but thank you.
Since January, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I think one of the things that speaks to that is that looming over, and you're right, Mrs. Larson put a great deal of time into it with, you know, with the people that you mentioned, too, and she, one of the things I think that was looming over our heads was the fact that this was a one-year issue. And while none of the solutions were necessarily perfect solutions, because there were costs, soft or hard financial costs to each issue, that there were, we tried to find the best solution, and we had a lot of parents who really gave us some very positive, outside-the-box kind of comments and input. And we're going to keep that email address that Betsy created, thecommunity@chathamschools.org, so that people can ask, you know, give input to other issues, or if there becomes, you know, kind of a hot topic that's being discussed, they can continue to use that. Because I think sometimes people just don't know necessarily who to send it to, and so Betsy is watching that email address so that she can then send it on to whoever needs to have that email or needs to address the issue. And we had a lot of very positive comments from people just, you know, like I said, thinking outside the box, and helped us get to that point of, what's the best solution? There's no perfect solution, but what's the best for the situation, knowing that it is a one-year issue. And luckily, we're fortunate enough to be able to add on to our schools, so good job, Jill.
So we'll look at enrollment, freeze it, create waiting list, and we'll go from there and see what happens. I'll keep you posted.
Questions, comments?
I'd just like to echo Jill's comment on thanking the parents and appreciate the emails and the passion at which all of your concerns come through. I think we all read all of those, we don't all respond to all of them, some are comments, some don't get a response, but that information is used to help us with the process here, helps the administration, and it's really important to your involvement in everything here. And I know everyone's asking for more transparency and to be involved, and this is what it looks like. And it's just much appreciated. Thank you all.
Any last comments, Jill? Okay. Any other comments by the board? If not, then...
Thank you, Jill.
Then need a motion then to approve the administrative recommendation tonight to adopt option three as proposed this evening?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Thank you, Linda, in a second. Thank you, John. And call roll, please.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Whitehead.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Todd.
Yes.
Charlie.
Yes.
Quater.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you again, everyone.
Can I introduce the next one?
Absolutely.
The next one is the discipline code, and I want to start by recognizing the people that are here in this room that have worked very hard on this. I think five or six buildings are here. And please stand when I call your name. Elizabeth Gillum, Meredith Higgins, GES, Tricia Burke, GES, Eric Sergeis and David Haye. David drew the short end of his mashup and said, I will tell you that of all the years, and we've done this for years, and many of you have seen this, this is probably the best put-together that they've done.
I totally agree. I really appreciate it.
I am very happy, and they worked very well together and collaborated. So David is yours.
We're already trying to present them all in one document here. If you have some questions about some of the other buildings, I may have to refer to some other folks here. On the left on this chart, you'll see that the current language on the right is the proposed language for next year. The first two are additions to all schools and apply to all handbooks. Both are highly suggested recommendations by the Glenwood Principal Association. The first is to add electronic cigarettes, to consider also a violation of tobacco product policies. The second is to add the term smartphones under definitions of mobile electronic devices. That would be added to all handbooks across the board in all the schools. The next change that only applies to one school is the change at GIS. They have removed a phrase that says, "Two or more tardies in one week will result in a lunch/recess detention." That's the only change proposed at GIS. Next change is applied to GMS. Most of the entire, unacceptable entire policy is listed there. I think the only change that they made, there's two lines there that starts with tops. They tried to simplify the language there. There's a lot of detail about if there's a coat, if there's a jacket or shirt. They tried to simplify the language there and make it very clear, the tops that expose the shoulder are not acceptable, tops that expose cleavage or midriff, so on and so forth. So the rest is the same. And these are very similar to what's done at the high schools. The middle school and high school changes primarily are ones that make them very similar, so the policies are the same. The next one that is also to be done at GMS is a change in the mobile electronic device policy. The policy that they have accepted is essentially exactly the same as the one at the high school. They've added also, which we did too, and I'll tell you that in a minute, under number eight, if you go all the way down to eight, they've added a progression of consequences for first, second, third, fourth and fifth offenses to that, which we did also, but ours are different because some of the consequences are different. So essentially, the middle school is adopting the high school mobile electronic device policy. Next change is also at GMS. Let's see. Actually, I guess it's just a continuation of the previous one. Sorry, I apologize. The next one in GMS is tardiness to school, under sixth tardy there. They've changed it from mandatory parent-team conference and tightened contract established to a sixth tardy, which would be in-house detention. That again is very similar to what is done at the high school, and so they made that change. The next change is a high school change. We've added, like the middle school did, a progression for violations of the mobile electronic device policy for first, second, third, fourth and fifth. Right now, we don't have a progression in that area. We thought it was important to do so for consistency from classroom to class and teacher to teacher, and so that everyone knows what progression is, as it's a fairly common violation. The next change is a GHS change also. The change from the column on the left and right, under appropriate attire and appearance, we have removed what's in parentheses there on the left, shorts and skirts should be longer than one's fingertips, arms are at rest to one's side. That change was actually made at GMS last year. It's simply not, to be honest, it's simply not practical anymore. It's also rather arbitrary. So we've removed that. Really, the rule hasn't changed any, they must not be revealing and so on and so forth, but that little application is being removed. And the last change is not really a change in policy, but it's an addition to the act of gross misconduct section. Violations of our acceptable use policy for our district's network and devices was not listed under gross misconduct. It doesn't change what we're able to, you know, any consequence we're able to apply from suspension to expulsion. It doesn't really change that because it was already in the acceptable use policy, but we thought it was important that it be listed under gross misconduct, which is the only kind of violation that we can suspend for. It wasn't listed, so we simply created language to be added to that area and thought it important to go through the year before we do so. So it doesn't really change any of the consequence or any of our capabilities on the acceptable use policy, but it just adds it under that category, level two, or an act of gross misconduct. Do you have any questions? I'd be glad to take them. Also, I may have to defer to some of the other folks for other building questions.
This is a Mr. Carter question, since he left us already. Can we please remove the apostrophe after PDA, where it says PDAs? A couple of times, since it's not possessive, it's just plural. Sorry.
Which one is that in?
It's, you'll see it in the very top, definitely under the, when you've added smartphones. So there's one there and one a little further down.
Okay.
Since I see how he added it to my son's papers, I figured.
Get the red pen out.
No problem.
Anything else?
This is wonderful, though. The way that you've presented it to us is just great.
Yeah. I'd like to compliment you, too, on the presentation, but I'm going to express a little bit of disappointment that we haven't addressed the extracurricular code and tying it in with the levels of misconduct in the student handbook. I mean, we kind of had consensus, this was before Steve and Rick were on the board, we had consensus that we would try to tie the two in together. Because we dealt with a couple, two different instances of student discipline where the discipline happens kind of in the fall, and then all of a sudden, a person tries out for sports in the spring or whatever, and then there's a surprise lingering discipline issue. And I just, I just wish our handbook was more explicit about tying those together on two levels.
And one of the things we did try to do is we took the language regarding athletic consequences into our suspension notices, so that it...
Whether that's brought up in the fall, so that's fine. Although there's no change in the handbook in that regard. You know, just looking, because there's two elements to this. One is, when you get to the extracurricular policies, they talk about offenses, and there's no reference to the levels of misconduct in student discipline. And again, you may or may not recall, we had a student discipline issue once that then involved the extracurricular consequences, but the extracurricular consequences weren't specific enough, so that just had to be thrown into the theft clause under extracurricular. If the extracurricular clauses just referred back to the levels of misconduct or also referenced the levels of misconduct in the student discipline section, then there would be less...
Referring to addition to the athlete.
Yeah, yeah. If I can do that.
I can take that back to the...
The issue was, it was either forgery or it was stealing, it was stealing a test or something like that, the answers or whatever, cheating, basically cheating.
I know exactly what you're referring to.
And yet, when it came to the, when it came in the spring to the academic discipline issue, the parent were saying, well, this wasn't theft, and that was the clause that we had to hang back on. So I just, I still think those things could be clear, and this is for the parents, really, I think we all understood. It's more that the parent and the student is just kind of, and it's not going to bother anybody until the one child gets in trouble, and then everybody's picking through this specific...
I'll take that back to us.
Thank you, John.
Anything else?
Next year.
All right. Yeah. Hopefully, we can, you know, if we can...
We can bring it back now.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, David.
Thanks. Thanks to your team, appreciate that. So we need to approve these handbooks. I need a motion to approve the recommendation of the administration with the changes outlined in the discipline handbook as presented this evening.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Alan, in a second, please. Thank you, Steve. Call roll, please.
Whitehead.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Carter.
Meyer.
Yes.
Yes. Up next, financials.
Okay. A quick update on the levy. Betsy, if you want, I can help you out. Just want to give you the numbers are in for the levy. No tax money's come in yet, but these are the numbers. This is a chart just to let you see where we were at with the proposed levy in the fall, and then where the actual numbers fell, based on the levy report received from the county. So you can see what we had asked for and versus what we were going to receive. The EAV, of course, we estimate a maximum rate of, you know, 5% increase. That's just, we didn't think it was going to be that high, but we, to, that would be the true limitation without having to have a hearing, that's the maximum we could go. And we didn't think it would be quite that high, been roughly around 3%, came in a little over 2. So a little lower, even though we were hoping. But there is still lots of construction out there, so we do see that continuing to grow in these coming years. It's just a matter of when they hit the books. So we are seeing lots of construction going into both commercial and clearly residential are going in consequently, but we like the commercial.
This is local money, this doesn't have anything to do with the state.
Correct. It's all local money. So these are these numbers here. And then, just to give you an idea how the numbers came in by type, so where the residential, farm, commercial, industrial make up the total EAV, you can see by type and how they were a year ago versus what they are this year, where the growth is, and how we got to the total. New property, down a little, even though we see lots of construction, lots of holes in the ground, lots of houses being built, it's all about timing, it's just a matter of when they come on the books. So this is typical, the new property goes up and down and up and down for us, but overall the EAV continues to grow. Just to give you an idea where those numbers are. And then those who want to know what the new actual EAV will mean for possible property change, our estimate back in November is this yellow gray box down here in the middle. That's what we were estimating, and we're not knowing exactly where the EAV would fall. And the actual now, based on a $100,000 home, is that it's an increase of about $27 on your tax money.
And that's because of the increase in value.
It's because the EAV, right.
EV is increased.
Right. EAV didn't go as high as we anticipated it might, so in order to capture what we're due, each person knows just a little bit more of that news. Any questions about this or these numbers at this point? We should see tax money flowing about middle May and then middle June, where the two payments we expect for this fiscal year are still to receive. Line of credit, we did have a request for line of credit for bids. We received the following bids from these local banks. They were open on April 5th to the block, and offered the two-year term, offered the full, $4 million, different rates, some had a different rate year one, some had a slightly different rate in year two, a couple of different options, as you can see, you know, from one bank to another. Some had no fees, some had a few fees, and some had some other notes in there. And when you just got right down to it, UCB had the lowest rate and no fees, and it really meant everything we were looking for. So my recommendation is that we would accept this line of credit as quoted here, same rate for two years, maximum amount of $4 million. So there's resolution for you to approve tonight if that's your choice to accept them as the lowest bid.
Can you pull up that resolution? We'll do that right now? Okay.
That's your recommendation. That is my recommendation. And they are who we currently have, so it does lend itself to that as well, that they were clearly the lowest bid.
Any questions or comments?
If it makes the taxpayers feel any better, I think last year, we were flat with our actual property tax increases.
A little closer, a little closer to flat. A little closer to flat, had a higher EAV. Also didn't ask for quite as much.
There's no other questions on the line of credit? And you've taken a look at the resolution to that effect? Need a motion then to approve this resolution as presented in your board packet tonight? And, I'm sorry, and to approve the lowest bidder, which is United Community Bank.
I'll take that motion.
Thank you, Alan. In a second, please.
I'll say it.
Thank you, John. Call roll, please.
Carter. Yes.
Todd.
Yes.
Charlie.
Yes.
Quater.
Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Whitehead.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Quater.
Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Whitehead.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Todd.
Yes.
Charlie.
Yes.
Quater.
Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Whitehead.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Todd.
Yes.
Charlie.
Yes.
Quater.
Yes.
Peter Meyer. first chart up here lists the Ed Fund dollar amounts by school and where they were by budgeted amounts. So this was the 11-12 budgeted amount, this was the 12-13 budgeted amount, and this is the 13-14 proposed at this point. This isn't for any actions, this is just some information at this point to see where they're coming in at. And overall, from the current year that we're in to next year, we're down. We are including a line specific for contingency, we didn't do this in last year's budget. What this is, is a set aside, as you've heard in some of the construction projects, it's a contingency, it's unknowns, unforeseen's, you may need access to some funds, we want to have it there, it would be something you would approve as part of your budget. They can't code any purchases to that line, they can't buy anything out of that line. It requires a transfer into the specific area where they need it, which most has to go through the principal for approval and then through me for approval. So they wouldn't, we would know what's going on before they could access that dollar amount. It's a very minimal dollar amount, it's overall between all of the buildings, it's a grand total there of $30,000, it's just a set aside. What we recommend is for supplies and services, possibly equipment, depending on what it is that maybe comes up. Just for comparison, I think it was the FY10 year I was looking at, there was $150,000 contingency line that was just held in that budget. So much higher then, budgets were a little different then, but you know, we're looking at setting aside some money that they know they could possibly get access to if something were to come up that we wouldn't know. Large move in, need some supplies for classrooms, we have that very, that happens a lot unfortunately. So you just can't predict some of your enrollment numbers and some of your needs until the year in the year. And this would allow you, at the time when you approve your budget, you're approving this overall dollar amount, we hold that line for contingency, and then if something comes up, they have to work through us or through the superintendent to get approval, and then we would allow the transfer, then they can make the purchase. But you'd already have authorized that money if needed.
And that's just a typo in that we didn't take out the 10% contingency.
I'm sorry, yeah. We were discussing a maximum 10% of their budgeted amount, but they didn't, obviously we didn't go up that high. So in construction, you've seen some of the 10% numbers, 8% in some of the projects, just depending on what it is. So we threw 10 out there as sort of a starting point, looked at it and kind of backed it down a little bit. So you're right, that's not actual 10%, if you're wondering about my math.
Patrick, can you address why there is such a difference? Some schools are 27, I mean, they're.
Are you still in the Ed Fund here?
Yes. GMS is under by 20, 27,000.
Sure, some of that's athletics, they're finding some ways where we're reducing some areas in athletics, we're reducing some areas there. Some of the teams have been eliminated, so some supplies that were specific to teams versus a grade level, how they managed their budgets before, so with some of the staff reductions, there's some supplies and materials that aren't needed for those types of activities. These, those activities would be going out in that manner. So it's now back to strictly a more of a classroom need or department need, not a wing or a team need also. So there's some differences there and some athletic differences as well.
And is fall elementary more because they're considering they may have to add some classes, add some teachers?
Well, at this point, they still have pre-K, so they also have more students and more requirements. And the pre-K has, pre-K has not yet filtered into the other schools. Break the bread.
Yeah. Break the bread, it's a base, yeah. Okay. Break the paste, break the ground.
And in the O&amp;M Fund, the green section down here, we do include the district line here, as you can see what else this includes, Mr. Murphy's area, facilities and grounds, but also custodial lines are all in here. One area that may notice, GES, is a little higher, that really directly relates to the utilities. When GES was first built and operational and when we took it over, the utilities weren't quite calculated correctly, we weren't billed correctly, so when we made last, this year's budget, it was based on a year's worth of data that we were, we had not yet been billed correctly at the time. Since that, working of that year's budget, the city's figured out what the issue is and what the actual costs of electricity and water are to that building. Therefore, we realized a larger increase now to reflect current costs. So we had missed the bills we were getting lower than what they should have been, we've corrected for that, but in the budget, that wasn't in the current year's budget.
So is this a catch-up? The $90,000 catch-up?
It's reflective of what it should have been this year.
Oh, so that's what it.
So it's more reality. So it looks like a large increase in their utilities. You say, how does a new school end up having higher cost utilities? Reality is, we were underbilled for a long time on that building, we've corrected for that and we've paid the correct bill, and it was just how it was being determined.
So you're saying going forward, it's going to be $421,000 a year versus?
Including custodial staff and other things, and everything that's going in there, or supplies.
Versus $123,000 at Chatham?
Chatham elementary being so much lower than GE.
Or even?
As far as utilities?
Or the overall budget altogether.
A lot of that has to do with utility costs. GE is all electric pumps, they've got gas at Chatham Elementary. In addition to that, we weren't being billed correctly, we incurred about $25,000 of additional costs for water, and our water consumption has gone up throughout the district over the past year due to the drought situation. And we've seen an increase in water, water, about 20% for our billing, because of the new water main they've run.
That's a huge difference.
I'm sorry.
That's a huge difference. I mean, $90,000.
Could we, could we maybe come back with next month, a breakdown of what those costs are that are included in there, just so they can see the comparison of what?
We, our first year, we budgeted $50,000 for electricity. We're currently around $95,000 this year, so the budget from last year didn't fit development. And it was strictly an estimate.
No, but it's still.
It's still reflected state of the art efficient building.
Yeah, I would like to see why, why there's such a big difference.
I'll tell you what, when we meet next, I'll bring that information forward.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And then the transportation line. As you know, he's, Mr. Lovell has made a commitment not to purchase any vehicles this coming year, so that's the large reduction there. And he's also allotted a contingency line there as well. There's some other areas for cost savings that he's been able to realize for the coming year as well.
And we have, you know, we have no idea what the state's going to do, and many parts come out of the budget, but they haven't even, they haven't even begun to address it.
No, but even the predictions are looking the same, I mean, we can lose a lot of money, what we're owed by the state.
Ode?
Money that you would be eligible for based on your claim for reimbursement purposes.
For this year.
Right. If the projections go through that they only want to fund it around 19% for what you're owed.
For next year, they'll cut it on this year?
Yeah, you incur it this year and then you submit your claim.
Oh, I see. Great.
But we'll still be incurring costs for the current year. So even using this year's claim as an estimate to say, well, if everything else stayed the same, we submitted the exact same claim, here's what the projection is that you would receive. Very little. Very little.
Yeah.
Any other questions about the, where we're at right now with the FY14 budget numbers?
Anything else? No?
And just a chart, just kind of visual, you can kind of see again by the building, this is the Ed Fund, and that's with the contingency included this year, that extra $30,000 built in there. You can see the blue bar represents the 11-12 year, the red bar is your 12-13 year, and the green bar represents then the proposed 13-14 at this time. So you can see how they've been able to still even realize some savings.
And these are still Ed Fund without sellers' benefits?
So strictly supplies, materials, equipment.
Patrick?
Yeah.
I hate to do this, would you back up to the this one? How did we save $289,000?
That's a combination of all of the Ed Fund, the Operations Fund, and the Transportation Fund. So those are all three of those. And that, absent working cash is basically your operating fund. Because those are your expenses.
But just for the Transportation Fund, am I?
Right, just the Transportation Fund.
Am I not getting it, am I?
Right. The 289 is your real savings in your Transportation Fund?
Strictly for that fund.
Just for that fund.
How did we save that much money in that fund?
The anticipation is to, you won't be planning to purchase buses next year.
No buses.
That's the largest portion of that.
And I apologize for the.
Sure. And there's some other savings, reducing the rocket ship.
Rocket ship.
And the buses is the main number.
Because they're like $90,000. I am sorry to.
No problem.
That's all right.
What's with those? All right, next item. We've been part of an Illinois Funds, State Board Educational Deposit money that we are owed into the Illinois Funds. District set this up many, many, many years ago when times were good and interest rates were higher. And at the point where we're at now, where we're actually asking for lines of credit to help cover periods of time when cash flow is low, having the state deposit money in one account, there really is no interest being earned because as soon as the money's there, we're then transferring it back to the account where we actually need to pay the bills out of, and it's processing, it's time, it's a lot of effort just to simply get the money into the account where it needs to be. So unfortunately, I'm before you today just asking you for it to dissolve that relationship at this time. And then basically, it's, as you read the resolutions, it's authorizing you as the board to oversee your own finances, which is what you're doing anyway. So basically, the state would be allowed to then deposit the money directly into our primary account, which is where all of our other money goes right now anyway, to the starting point. So it would be immediately accessible, we wouldn't have to do journal entries, we wouldn't have to do transfers, we wouldn't have to do more accounting, simply to move the money where we can actually access it from.
The state doesn't mind that they're not going to be able to?
They're not making anything that way.
No.
It's in the old days where they could lend overnight and make a couple million bucks.
So if we need official action by the board to dissolve that, and then we can forward this to the state, they can then transfer the money straight to our account.
Okay.
So it's efficiency and your process.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. A motion by Lisa, in a second, please. Thank you, Rick. Call roll, please.
Carter.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Yes.
I guess it was more fun for you to read the resolution.
Oh, no, it wasn't. Maybe for some people, but.
Tonight, we've been in the night.
Yeah, right.
Another resolution, again, in order to try to avoid accessing our line of credit and paying even more interest than is necessary, seeking your approval to transfer working cash funds into two different, other funds, one the Ed Fund and one the IMRF Fund, to offset costs in those funds that will help delay just a little bit the need to access. It's cash we have on hand that allows us to pay bills in those funds, it's a loan. I mean, I'll be back, it'll be with you probably July after the majority, some of the majority of our tax money is in, as soon as we can then pay it back to the working cash, that would replenish your working cash fund. So you're asking, it's borrowing from money you already have, putting it into another area where you're then allowed to spend it against bills, and then when we have the money coming in from our taxes, I'll ask you for the reverse of these transfers to go back probably July, would be my guess, June or October, really beginning to pay back that loan.
Can you explain why, why make it a loan? Why just not make it a straight transfer?
Laws. We're fortunate that the laws allow us to do this right now, and hopefully they'll continue to extend it.
Probably have to allow you to use your working cash.
Yeah, yeah. It's just how the laws are written around those funds.
That's 1.8 million and 1.4.
Yeah, the first one is for, yeah, it's a total of 1.8400,000 going into the IMRF, so I do, you know, your resolution separately. So it'd be a $400,000 transfer into working cash, from working cash into the IMRF Fund. And then the other one is the 1.4 million, and that leaves just, I mean, a few thousand dollars, but it leaves a little amount, so there's not a zero dollar amount in the working cash, because we're technically not abating it, we're not limiting all of it, we're just borrowing as much as we can.
That still leaves, that still leaves the Ed Fund, you know?
It does at this point. I was hoping, as I mentioned in the last board meeting, the, we'll talk about the Treasurers' report, that there were some numbers that we were doing with the journal entries and they weren't coming out the way we wanted them to with the auditors, and they weren't able to get in here with tax season and April 15 deadline, so they were not able to get in here before that timeline, so I'm still hoping they'll be here in the next week or so. So we're still working on that issue because the journal entries that they've given us to work on based on the audit aren't coming out with the fund balance in a couple of funds the way we had wanted them to, so.
More to come.
Yes, more to come.
I have a zero.
So it's two resolutions.
Yep. Any other questions on that? Need a motion then to approve the resolutions for inter-fund loans as presented in your board packet tonight. The first one, working cash to educational fund, and the second, from working cash to the IMRF, to be repaid into those funds at a future date upon receipt of tax monies.
Can we make that one motion?
Yes, yeah. Thank you. Okay, in a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Alan. And call roll, please.
Harley.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Whitehall.
Yes.
Yes. And Treasurers' report.
Now, with that said.
Your favorite.
Yeah. Update on the revenues and expenses, I think you'll actually approve this as your Treasurers' report as well, hopefully. Just revenues at this point, again, a reminder that until early tax money starts coming, which is typical in May and then June, revenues are not very strong. It's very, you know, it's how our cycle usually goes. So while we're three-quarters of the way through our budget year, we're still only seeing 50 to 60% of some of the budgeted line numbers, because we don't get a large number again until the end of the year with some of the taxes. This does give you an idea of where some of the money's come in, some transfers have occurred, and, and particularly like the capital projects where we've had sales of the bonds. There's another sale of bonds that's not recorded on here, still working on some numbers on that too with the auditors, so that's not reflected here. We did do a sale, a bond sale in January, so there's some more money here that'll be in the Capitals' project. It should be reported in the next month. But just to give you an idea, as of April 17th, the state still owed us $915,000. They vouchered, this comptroller, the comptroller just hasn't had the cash on hand to release that money yet. We're due it, we expect it, we anticipate it, but it's hovered around that $700, $800, now $900,000 much of the year.
We are going to get it.
That amount, yes, I expect we will get that. When?
Magic them.
Different issue.
What year?
But I do expect that, they've actually vouchered it and said, you're.
We're all getting subsidies because we got that.
Comptroller. So far, even if they've been delayed, we have seen all of that, so I would say, yes, we're getting that. And then on the expense side of things, really doing pretty good, in line with where we budgeted so far. 75% of the year is complete, and your breakdown again within each fund, where we were at a year ago, where we're at this year, where we're at compared to the budget. Some have wondered, some have always asked, how can you still have money in the debt service fund? It says we have a payment due in July, so it's just a timing issue. Transportation Fund, see where we're at with our expenses this year today, but overall as an entire budget, we're still within about where we expected to be, so doing pretty good. Buildings have been doing an excellent job of holding off where they don't need and pushing off to next year, and we keep, you know, they're doing a good job.
I know we spent a lot of money on some residential placement of special needs kids, are we still within our budget?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, absolutely, actually, yeah, absolutely.
Well, would you make the average person?
Yeah. The special ed side of it, we tend to see a much higher reimbursement rate. We see that money, we see that money timely. Sometimes we don't even know we're getting it from the ghetto.
Checks in.
I know. And so then your fund report, which reflects your transfers.
Any questions on anything? Comments?
I'd just like to comment.
Sure.
Director of the administration and the buildings, and Patrick. The last couple of years, and I've been here two years now, I've been incredibly trying, if you're budgeting at home or here, and just the attitude that everyone has kept up and the hard work that's going into these numbers, while they're still not, and Alan mentioned that we would hope they'd be springing off into positive, but it's not, it's because it's a declining revenue situation and a flat to increasing expense situation, and it's not any fun. But everyone has kept their nose to the grindstone, so to speak, and we're very hard to keep this district in, going in the right direction, while the state is pulling us the other way and actually moving us into deficit spending and into using up the reserves that were there. But everyone's hard work is paying off, just thank you all for your efforts in there.
I'll add that I shared this with Kerry about a week ago, that I was concerned that the next four years on this board, that you guys are going to be overwhelmed by this financial problem, and I, you know, the fear that I have for you guys is tempered though, but with Kerry and Patrick here, I think, you know, I think you guys are doing a great job with this, and I hope it'll turn around.
Any other comments, questions? Not then, we, you know, motion to approve the treasurer's report and the financial report as presented this evening.
I'll leave that motion.
Thank you, Rick. In a second, please. John, thank you. And call the roll, please.
Quater.
Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Witzel. Yes.
Carter. Yes. Cal.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Witzel.
Yes.
Carter. Yes. Cal.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Witzel. Yes.
Carter. Yes. Cal.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Witzel. Yes.
Carter. Yes. Cal.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Witzel. Yes.
Carter. Yes. Cal.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Witzel.
Yes.
Carter. Yes. Cal.
Yes. Thank you. And thank you, Patrick. Appreciate it. Thanks, Kerry. Move on to new business. The first item on new business is the approval of the BCE SPA collective bargaining agreement that was negotiated in the last couple of weeks. We've reached consensus on this, we've reached agreement on this, and up here you see that some of the items that, material items that are in the agreement, again, a 1.66 increase, retroactive, back to 11, 12 school year, when we started this whole process, and I want to thank, first of all, Deb Bell is here, who's president of the union and was a head negotiator, and Kathy Cook is here also, who represented a group of special education teachers that was instrumental in negotiations on here, and I want to thank them for everything that they did to bring this to fruition also. Again, then we've got a 1.5 retroactive increase for the 12, 13 school year that we're currently in, 1.5 for next year. And then some salary ranges. We, one of the things that we really wanted to do, that we looked at almost right from the beginning, was to make some market adjustments on positions that we thought, and we've thought, administration has thought for a long time, and the board has thought that too, that were, that were below a competitive salary standard. We brought, we tried to bring those up to, so that we were at a competitive arena, so that we could keep the great teachers that we have and pay them, pay them back more money than, than they've been making, for a lot of them during the majority of the time they've been teaching in the district here. So we wanted to do that, we also wanted to get into some, into a scale, into a range based on the position, get it into a range of, a salary range, a high and a low, and then make some adjustments on that, bring people, you know, if they're above it, there's some things, if they're below it, they would come up to that range. So I don't know if there's any, some shift differentials, some summer compensation, perfect attendance awards, and I personally, I think...
Do you have the bus driver's compensation?
Oh, bus driver, grandfathered for one year. Bus drivers were, well, the health, what's the name of the, the Health Insurance Act that was just done?
Affordable Care.
Affordable Care. Affordable Care Act, thank you. I never thought it was that. Anyway, it, it has a threshold of 30 hours worked in there, in that act, for people to, to be eligible for benefits. And we have, we have some positions in the district that don't work those 30 hours a week, so the only one that did, did not work the 30 hours a week that was getting, was getting health insurance was the bus drivers. Everybody else, if you've got cafeteria workers, or you've got playground, and you've got some other part timers that are out there that weren't making it, they of course weren't getting it. But what we did is, we put the drivers, and we're allowing the drivers to apply, and I shouldn't say that, we're allowing all employees to apply, because it was before you couldn't put two part-time jobs together to create a full-time position. Well, starting with the approval of this and whatever implementation we have to do, that all part-time employees will be able to apply for other positions in the, other part-time positions in the district. If they're part-time now, they'll be able to apply for other part-time positions to get them to that 30-hour threshold. And one of the things that we built into this is that we have grandfathered the, all the bus drivers in for one year from the date of ratification, so it'll be this time next year, that those bus drivers, if they want to continue with their health insurance, they'll have to apply and, and be hired in another position in the district that will, that will be the total of 30 hours. So it's, there's a lot of things that went in there, in the board packet, there's a copy there of the, of the agreement itself, of the, of the contract. And then just to talk about a few people, we've got Michelle Belinski, who spent hours and hours putting some of this stuff together. We've got, Jill did some work for us on it, we, Patrick has done the, went through and did the financial stuff on this. Linda and I were the board team to, to bring this, to negotiate this, and then of course, Kerry was instrumental in bringing this to fruition also. And I know that there's a lot of, Deb, would you like to say anything at all? I know I'm putting you on the spot, I didn't tell you that you can...
Do you want me to stand up, or just...
You can do it from there if you'd like.
Okay. Yeah, we, we have been bargaining for 19 months with the board, lots of meetings, lots of time, no throne chairs, no sworn words, but we did not get everything we wanted, and I don't think you would anticipate getting everything you wanted. But in explaining what we were wanting, we were also hearing what the board understood our jobs to be, our positions to be, and so it was nice to see their perspective and them seeing our perspective, where we melded together and came up with a very good first contract that starts off with a good foundation for the rest of our ESPs and for, and future contracts. And I just want to thank you very much, too, that I think it went well, negotiations, they were trying times at times, but I think in all and all, it went real well for our first negotiating contract.
You're welcome. Thank you, too, for your...
You know, it was a lot of give and take on both sides, and it was good to hear, to hear what our educational support staff, what their actual jobs were their day-to-day, because what we see on paper is sometimes not always what is the reality of the situation. So it was good when we had those opportunities to talk to each other about that. And I know one of the important things that the ESP staff wanted was to have a uniformity of expectations and jobs and rules across the district, and the contract should really help that. So what is expected in one, one school will also be expected in another school, and I think that's going to be important. But I think the give and take was very good. There were trying times. I don't think any of us thought it was going to take 19 months.
Yeah.
My husband kept saying, "You're doing what, a meeting?" When I'd say we had a meeting. But I think it's going to work out well. Our educational support staff is vital to our students and to our school district as a whole. We could not do what we do, we would not be in the position of recognition that we are in if we didn't have a good educational support staff. They make sure our buildings are safe, well-maintained, they make sure our students are well taken care of when they're at school, and when they're on the way to school and on the way home. We couldn't do it without you guys, and I'm glad we have a contract, and thank you very much for what you did.
What else on that?
I want to thank specifically for the rest of the board, Jim and Linda, who just put, we know, hours and hours into this, and of course, we're all volunteers after that. We all, as a board, appreciate the extra effort that our subcommittee put in.
Any other comments, questions?
I think at the end, you've all kind of, I'll just echo what you've already said, is that, that we were tough on the issues, not the people, and I think that's what good negotiations are. Good negotiations, you end up being, both sides end up a little disappointed and a little happy, you know, I think that's a good negotiation when you walk away and kind of, you know, have that feeling. And our mediator that, that worked with us was wonderful, and she was very, you know, very articulate, and just really got us to think outside the box on both sides, I think. And she said that to us right when she first walked in, that be tough on the issues, not the people, and I think that helps us as an organization still be able to work together closely and have those good relationships, professional relationships at the end, because, you know, it's the issues that are the problem, and, you know, that what we need to be tough on, not each other, and I think that both sides really did that, both negotiating teams. It was very, you had a great team, so.
Yeah, it was a, you know, through 19 months, it was a very positive experience. Learned a lot.
Yeah. We did. So thanks, Deb.
Yeah, thank you.
And Kathy.
Anything else? Not, you know, you motion then to approve the...
I would like to make the amount that we will...
Okay. I won't even say it. Okay. Now, I will second that. And so, Alan, I'll have Betsy call the roll.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Witzel. Yes.
Carter. Yes. Cal.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, we have a request for proposals.
Yes, so before you, it's permission to seek bids for school photography services. We had the contract in place of the company to do the extracurricular events, the activities sports, senior photos, those kinds of things. We'd like to re-release this bid, see the proposals again. And Mr. Lee and Dr. Cox can speak more specifically if you have questions about it. Basically, the services just weren't being provided at the level we were expecting, and so we terminated the existing contract and are seeking new bids. Tweaked the language, added some clarity in there, specifically mentioned some senior information that wasn't in the previous bid, so I think we're more clear, hopefully here about what we're expecting, and we look forward to receiving some new bids. Could be the same company, maybe with a different expectation, but this expels out what we're looking for and what our needs are. So if approved, this would go out, we get it published, and we'd expect them back in time to get recommendations to your June board meeting, because senior photos are really the most time-sensitive of all of the activities that need to take place, and they really need to start by July 1st anyway.
Okay.
So, questions?
How early did we do this before?
It was a bid in June of 11th, and in July of 11th, we held interviews, and we, we, I believe, other than the July board meeting, we took action to accept the bid, the proposal at that time. So it was July of 11th, so it's been two school years.
But what's the company now?
HR imaging.
HR imaging.
Is that a national firm? Wouldn't it be like a local firm to a national firm, and it's not working out again?
Right.
That's the summary. Okay.
There's potential for interview.
Well, they're regional, I can see somewhere.
They're based out of Chicago.
They, oh, that's...
Any other questions? You know, motion then to authorize the administration to seek proposals for school special event photography services that are presented in your board packet tonight.
Make that motion.
Thank you, Lisa. In a second, please. Thanks, Steve. Call roll, please.
Witzel.
Yes.
Carter. Yes. Cal.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Witzel. Yes.
Carter. Yes. Cal.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Witzel.
Yes.
Carter. Yes. Cal.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Witzel.
Yes.
Carter. Yes. Cal.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Witzel.
Yes.
Carter. Yes. Cal.
Yes.
Harley. Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Yes. Yes. 11 dot 3, emergency health life safety amendment.
We've got one of our buildings in distress, Chatham Elementary, has had a, a water main break underneath the floor in a 1957 building. Unfortunately, that also means a asbestos abatement to, to access the piping system. My health life safety architect came up with a good idea, rather than dig up the entire floor in that, that particular area, what we're talking about to demonstrate that.
Put it up here, Dave.
The area we're talking about is next to the gymnasium, there's a sleeve of bathrooms, if you can see it, that water service is provided underground. Unfortunately, the old kitchen also resides over here, and as a consequence, we don't really know where the leak's at, but what we've noticed is that not only do we now not have water service, but over the past five years, we've been watching the, the walls deteriorate because we're, we're seizing some subsidence, couldn't attribute it to anything. I even went to the village and asked for mine subsidence information, no mines in the area. What we think is happening is that, that the water's eroding the, the ground and the foundation underneath and creating some of those wall damage. What we're asking for tonight is that you approve the resolution providing emergency health life safety funding for the restrooms presented, as I've shown.
Well, you mentioned, you mentioned the, you're going to route it up over the top, right? Now, as opposed to underground?
Right, rather than dig up all the concrete and try to determine where, where the problem is, we're going to go in and route the pipes overhead. We still have an abatement to do, and we'll talk about that in a little bit.
Okay.
But what we're asking for tonight is acceptance of this resolution. Questions?
When does it start? When do you start the work?
I'm sorry?
When do you start the work?
We could start the, if we want to bid to work, and to bid to work, it takes the help of my health life safety architect to identify what specifically needs to be done. We've done that to the point of understanding what the asbestos abatement looks like. We're still working on the mechanicals and what it's going to take to retrofit the bathrooms. So that's the point we're at now, is we've worked with our insurance company trying to see if there's any help there, but the insurance company has raised their hand, said that there's no insurance coverage for this particular problem, they're willing to replace six, 10 tile, and that's about it. Yeah, that's why, so...
Yeah, that helps.
To support this, this project, we're looking for an emergency health life safety amendment.
When you say health life safety amendment, tell me what you mean by that. Where is that $100,000 going to come from?
Could you repeat it?
Where will the money come from, when you say...
We have fire protection safety funding available, but in addition to that, we've, we've identified another source of funding, and we'll talk about that next. It comes just in the form of a school maintenance grant that came out last Thursday, which as soon as it came out, we applied specifically for this project. The, the project looks like it's going to run about $10,000 total, the, the grant money
to be...
We're going to look at that. We're going to go back in and find out what's causing the walls to fail and the fashion that they're failing.
That's another issue.
Yeah, well, we're hoping we can cover that issue in this amount.
Right, Mike? Sharpen your pencil.
Those bathrooms were scheduled for renovation. This phase two work, they're just going to be moved up. The rest of the bathrooms in the building will get the same kind of treatment. This needs to happen this summer instead of next summer.
But this could have been leaking for years, is what you're saying?
Most likely probably has been, slow erosion, small leak.
Have we seen an excess of...
Manifested itself in a leak that shows up in the gymnasium now, so...
Have we seen an excess amount of water usage in that building?
Sorry?
Excessive amount of extra water usage in the building. I think the water, the water runs on...
What brought it to our attention, though, if you think of where the gym is in Chatham Elementary, there's actually water coming out and covered the entire gym floor at one time. So what we had to do is shut the water off and knock the restroom and drinking pumps off at that point in time.
Did it damage the gym floor?
Yeah, it did. We've got about 10 tiles that we'll have to pull up and re-glue.
Those are the tiles from the insurance company?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, based on that, need a motion then to approve this emergency health life safety amendment and resolution based on the information this evening and in your board packet.
Salute.
Thank you, John. In a second, Alan.
Second.
Thank you. And Colerone, please.
Carter? Yes, Pop?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Deere?
Yes.
Deere?
Yes.
Deere?
Yes.
Deere?
Yes.
Deere?
Yes. Anything more on the, on this grant, Dave, that you've got, or you want to cover?
We just talked about essentially what we're doing. We've made application. Everything's set to go, and it looks like we're in the approval lane for this maintenance grant, because what we're submitting on is emergency funding, and that's the top priority for approval. So we were fortunate to have that grant come out at this time, so we're going to take advantage of it. I need your approval to go forward and apply for the grant.
Is it a federal grant or a state grant?
State grant, yeah. The money actually comes from...
It actually does, all right.
That was going to be my... Other, the demands of other grants.
Yeah, state of Idaho.
State.
Keep the flow working.
So, need a motion then to approve the school maintenance project grant between Ball Chatham and Illinois State Board of Education that's presented in your board packet tonight?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. In a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Alan. Colerone, please.
Yes, Carter?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Yes. Next is HVAC recommendations.
We did have a bid opening for the Ball Elementary School for HVAC renovation. The amount's $1,337,100. We're recommending tonight that EL Pruitt be awarded the bid, and I brought our engineer from Hanson Engineers here to answer your question about mechanicals. Mike's here to talk about any other issues that you want to talk about far as this particular project. He's the oversight. We are a little bit over 6.6%. That puts us outside of what we estimated, and we're still inside contingencies. So we've got about $50,000 left for any change orders that come through on this project. So we're still good, you just, we're not where we intended to be as far as the total project fronts upfront.
Now, we've been delaying some of these modifications at Ball based on, if I remember right, based on the construction that was going to be there so we could tie everything together, is that?
Ball Elementary has not been touched since, you know, we started our 2020 plan.
Right.
And it was one of the last buildings to see some renovations, and we've got some serious renovation work to do, our mechanical systems in particular. There were the old unit ventilators are very uncomfortable, very inefficient. They leak water, insects, they're hard on kids as far as allergies, and I think moving to this new system will improve comfort level immensely and hopefully efficiency.
We still have those through-the-wall units there? We do, okay.
Yeah, and under this contract...
Those would go away.
Yes, absolutely.
Mike, why don't you tell us what the alternate bid would look like?
Alternate bid number one is about $24,500. It includes removing those unit ventilators that, under the current mechanical project, they would not be operable, but they would still remain. Under the alternate bid, if you so elect to accept that, the unit ventilators would be removed, which allows, they're taking up floor space right now. Most of them are about six or seven foot long, and you stick out from the wall a foot and a half. They would be removed. More importantly, not this summer, but next summer, due to the amount of work that's happening in that building, we are doing a lot of floor finish changes, new floor tile, new carpet. If those unit ventilators are there, they would simply have to go around them later. They're going to get them out of the way if you accept this alternate bid, which will allow you to cover that floor area next summer, you know, for the next 20 years or however long the floor finishes.
And it does free your floor space. We figured about 21 square feet.
So then, your, the recommendation is to go with the base plus the alternate bid? Is that...
Correct.
Okay, so for the 1.361 million?
The owner equipment pre-purchased was done last month, and that was equipment we purchased for rooftop equipment and for ventilation. So it felt important to include that price in here.
Any other questions? Linda, that was...
What is the pre-purchased there? I see $255,000, owner equipment pre-purchased. What is that?
That we pre-purchased rooftop equipment last month.
Okay.
We approved that last month.
To make sure our schedule stayed in pack.
Got it.
So they got a roof. You said you were hoping these would be more efficient. What kind of a system are we talking about here?
The, these are, Matt, why don't you tell us about that?
It's a, Matt's like with Hanson Engineers. He's our engineer on this job.
It's an air-source heat pump system. It's called variable refrigerant flow. So it's a newer type of system for the US. It's been used overseas extensively for the last 13 years. Highly efficient, maybe not quite as efficient as geothermal, but very close and for a lower cost. So that's the type of system that goes into every room. It's got dedicated outside area, which is the rooftop units we pre-purchased. Those are to serve ventilation space. Those units are also heat pump units, so they'll be highest efficiency type rooftop unit combined.
So what kind of percent efficient are you talking, thinking for holding for?
Percent efficient? That's a tough number to, I mean, I guess it depends on how you look at it. It should be more efficient than what's there. Should be significantly more efficient than the older equipment that's there. Is it going to be what a geothermal system is? Probably not quite. It's also not, you know, doesn't have quite the expense.
Some of the codes have changed since 1992, too. We're now required to bring in far more ventilation air than we were in the past, and that's to improve the conditions inside the educational area, so the kids are not subjected to all those allergens and contaminants that build up in a building over time. Any further questions?
You okay with that, Steve? Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Need a motion then to approve EL Pruitt as the supplier for the HVAC equipment at Ball Elementary in the amount of $1.137,100 for the base bid, and $25,000, is that right? $25,577 for alternate bid one that would remove the existing...
24,577.
Is it?
Total of...
Was it 24?
Yeah.
Can you pull that up again? It says 25,577. Okay, 24,577. It's wrong, okay.
Total of...
Total of $1,361,677. Thank you. John, in a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Alan. Colerone, please.
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Deere?
Yes.
Deere?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Yes. Next is abatement work at GIS Ball Elementary, Chatham Elementary. This is asbestos abatement.
It's our recommendation to award the abatement work at GIS Ball Elementary and Chatham Elementary. Can you open up the bid tab?
Sure.
In doing so, we had an opportunity to select our contractors per building here, and what we've done, we've looked at Thornberg Abatement for Glenwood Intermediate, and what we're doing at Glenwood Intermediate is to prep for new construction. This is all roof work. The roof is, you know, there's what's called a slip sheet in the roof itself. It's made out of asbestos, and it has to be removed before we can start construction. And that's what that $9,100 represents for Glenwood Intermediate. At Chatham Elementary, the $19,960 represents the work in the bathroom. Additionally, it also represents the work up in the attic. That attic floor, when they removed the tile after the fire, back whenever the fire was, they didn't clean the flooring off of the mastic, which contains asbestos. We had it tested, and if you drag your feet across it, you're producing fiber that flows through the air. So we have to get it removed, and we have to get it removed this year. So in addition to the bathroom work, it'll also be the attic work at Chatham Elementary. At Ball Elementary, the base bid there is for breaking down the 1926 building and capturing those bricks that we want to hand out. The $57,500 is a base bid for doing all the work, and that's based on a couple of different methodologies for removing asbestos. If it's a simple asbestos removal for carpet, it'll cost us that amount, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, $57.5. But if they have to do full containment to take the carpeting out, that's going to cost us an additional $13.2. So we wanted to prep for that by saying that we're going to accept Thonberg's abatement prize for $57.5 and $13.2 at this time, with the proviso, if we don't need to do it, we get the $13.2 back. So what we don't want to do this summer is get caught in a position where we think we can get the carpet up, and then we can't, and then we have to go back out for bid, bring it back in front of the board, and not meet our deadlines for getting the school built. So this $13.2 represents that security. Any question about it?
Any particular reason they're the highest on that base?
Well, it is a base bid. These are the same buildings, same contractors. I can't split up that particular piece, because they're going to be doing the abatement anyway, and if they get into it and find out they've got to do full abatement, they're right there on scene, and they can move right into full abatement.
Why is the $13.2...
Well, it's double...
$4,500?
You know what? Almost true. In my mind, that's a bidding strategy.
Because $13.2...
They're still low.
$57.5 were just as good as...
Yeah, they're still low then, yeah.
Yeah.
They're helping us do the alt bid, too.
Yeah.
Is there an estimate associated with this? If we scroll down?
No. There is no... Do we have an estimate? We didn't.
We, in the budget, we have, we're carrying $100,000 total in this, all this money for abatement work. If you add up all these, these are 90-something, or just, you know, $10,000, $12,000 underneath that, so we're still on the good side.
And remember, the $19,960 out of Chatham Elementary actually comes out of our other funding. It'll come out of our maintenance, our maintenance grant.
Grant funding, okay.
Any other questions?
And the only other building we have to touch is the high school, and we shouldn't have any...
No.
We shouldn't have any abatement there.
There will be some more at GIS when we start doing the phase two renovation areas and have to poke holes through the roof, because this, the amount that's shown there for GIS is only a strip about 12 foot wide by a couple hundred feet long, where we're tying in the new building. We have to put some new roof drains in, so we're not, we're not abating all of the asbestos that's on that roof. It's just, that's a million dollars.
Any other questions? Not that I need a motion to approve the administration's recommendation to award the abatement work as outlined in your board packet at GIS Ball Elementary and Chatham Elementary. Motion?
Please.
Thank you, Steve. In a second, please.
One second.
Thank you, Rick. Colerone, please.
Harley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Deere?
Yes.
Deere?
Yes.
Okay. One of the most confusing things I've read in the whole board packet was this thing, so it's...
I saved it. Cleared it up.
Check it out, make sure you... Yep. Bring it up.
Okay. Pull her right there.
Our topic for this item is easement and CWLP easement that we've signed into in 1995. Additionally, it's a lake shore lease that we're, went into agreement in 1995 with CWLP or with...
55. 55, right?
1955.
Okay.
It's a 60-year lease. It's due in 19, or sorry, 2015, July 18th, 2015. And I just want to show you folks that the easement allows us to utilize this area here. We don't actually own this property, but CWLP allows us to utilize it. Our property line actually comes up right through here, cuts across right here, comes right across here.
All right.
And that was agreed to in 1955. In 1992, when this wing was built, I looked into the survey report, and there was no property line report in that survey. As a consequence, they didn't consider that this much of the building is built on other people's property, and that that lease is due in 2015. In addition to that, everything that was put on this side of the, this is actually our property line here, and it just runs right along the road here, straight down, and back up through here. So everything that's on this side is part of that lake shore lease. All the infrastructure that's built there, all the electrical sewer, anything that's back in that area is on other people's property.
The lease.
The lease.
We're not building on other people's property.
City Springfield property.
That's correct. It belongs to, it is part of the lake shore properties. And this kind of identifies it. This is, this is CWLP property here. Our property line actually runs just like this, up and over and through, and Chad, can you scan that way a little bit, please? Keep going, keep going, keep going. Our property line runs up into here, and it actually ends on the other side of the road. So we own that. Okay? I looked at this, and because we were doing the prepping for construction next year, I think it's important to discuss it now, because we may make some improvements on the north side of GMS. And in looking at this, it may be advantageous to us to get out from underneath these leases and easements. So I did take advantage of that and talked with CWLP and asked them if there was any thought that we could do some horse trading. What we'd like to do, we'd like to consider is trade some property. We own this property here, which, believe it or not, has some of the oldest trees in Sangamon County. There's 300-year-old trees there. Friends of Sangamon Valley actually came in here and started, they helped us assess this problem. They came in and they were doing some work in here to clean up the shrubs and all the undergrowth, and they identified for us that, hey, you folks own this property. I don't think anybody... I don't think anybody in the district understood that. And to our benefit, we have an opportunity to perhaps trade this property, which is, again, virgin trees and, and a great location for a nature hike walk, nature trails, for this property that we're looking at here. I did speak briefly with Lake Shore Properties, Steve Franks, if anybody knows Steve Franks, and he indicated they've never done this, but they'd certainly entertain it if it makes, makes sense. And to me, it makes pretty good sense because we're, can you go back? What we're giving up is all the treat area and what we're, you know, what would become ours is what we need to be ours. Where all the kids, you know, have their physical training, competitive sports, and would allow us, if we ever need to build a shoulder on that road, we can build a shoulder. In 1992, CWLP raised their hand and said, you can't build any, any further here. You can't increase the size of the road. So not that we would want to do that now, but maybe sometime down the road. And it would allow us to improve back into this area without the thought of those improvements at some point in time coming under the jurisdiction of somebody else. So this is informational only, and all I would suggest is that we continue to meet with CWLP, the city of Springfield, and see if there's continued interest in doing that horse swap.
And do we know what hap, in 2015, do we know? I see that we're paying $200 a year in lake lease. My, where my house is, is lake lease property. You know, I don't live on a lake, it's still a lease, it's lake lease property. And when that, supposedly when that runs out, when that lease runs out, and they renegotiate that lease, that they would, the consensus is that then they would annex that property into the city of Springfield, and that, in some, in some cases, that has gone up by 10 to 20-fold that lake lease amount, lease amount, yes.
Again, I had only the briefest contact with, with Lake Shore Properties. It was just, do you have an interest or, and we have interest?
Sure.
And that's where we stopped.
Okay.
So...
It's, it's something to, you know, I mean, obviously, we can't give it back. We're not going to get rid of it because part of the school's on it, but... Now, is all that property lake lease property or just?
Just that corner.
That corner right there is all?
It's what we leased.
This area right here is lake shore lease.
Yeah.
This area right here is the easement.
Okay. Easement from the city of Springfield.
That's why he's wanting to take on that easement, too, just in case we need it.
And again, what I'm suggesting is, we could move into an agreement that looks something like that.
Okay.
And this property, we really don't use.
Okay.
Any thoughts?
My only thought. Pay more money.
With your permission, then, I'd like to continue on with discussion. And when we get to the negotiation phase, we'll, we'll bring other folks in.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, Dave.
Once again, a creative solution.
I'm sorry.
A creative solution.
Yeah. It makes sense to me and it makes sense to others when I talk with them, so...
Anything, let's see, let me go back here. We've got a couple of other things. Any roundtable discussion? Nobody had said really anything.
Just for me to make a personal thank you to the school district for, number one, allowing, and Alan, I'm sure, backed me up by allowing us to survey it for four years, but also for the education our kids got. Alan would agree with me. My kids are doing great in college. The triplets are going to be graduating, and some of that's certainly their own abilities, and some of that was their mother haranguing them to do their homework and still haranguing them over the phone to get the homework done. But also, some of that has, has been the school district providing, and I wanted to say that with everybody here. We, both Alan and I appreciate all the, all that this school district has done for our kids.
Carrie, anything else?
Just an update on our reduction in force list for teachers. For, we had, originally, as you know, we had 11 people on that RIF list when we made our budget cuts, which was 10.5 FTE, so 10 and a half positions, but 11 people. Last week, we had as many as six teachers on the list. After a few shuffles and resignations, we were able to recall two more, and then we know that one has obtained employment outside of the district, and so we have three on our RIF list currently. And every time we get a resignation, we go right back to our list and, you know, because it doesn't always match up exactly, so the people on the RIF list may not have certifications required for the opening that we might have based on a resignation or retirement or, you know, someone moving out of the district, then oftentimes, you know, we have to make quite a significant shuffle in terms of taking the people who are currently in these positions that the person is certified for and shuffling them into a position that they may not have had as much experience with but are able to and certified to teach, and then we can recall those people. But that has been our, our goal. Jen and Michelle and Jill and the principals have all worked very hard on that because it was a commitment that we made when we made these reductions. We really committed to our teachers that that would be the process that we would work through, and we would try to recall as many people as possible. And I think the fact that we've gotten down to three people, while there are still three that are very, very impacted, we've tried very hard to make sure that we can recall as many as possible. And we also have posted positions for study hall aides for our paraprofessionals and, you know, so we have paraprofessionals that, that have options, too. So we've, we've tried very hard to make it something that is palatable for the district as a whole. Just an update.
And the offer to the retirement, the retirement offer for the...
Teachers.
Eligible for retirement.
No one has taken us up on it yet. They have until June 15th. Did we say June 15th or June 1st? I can't remember offhand what the MOU said. I think it was June 15th that we put in the MOU, so we still could have some that, that would be interested, but as of yet, we haven't had anyone take the incentive.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. And then the last item we have is future board meeting dates. Next Wednesday, May 1st, we will seat new board, the two new board members, and then we have our regular, May 20th and June 17th, regular board meetings at the regular time. End of the year staff breakfast, May 28th, 8 o'clock in the GHS Commons. And then there's an attachment there also that proposed board meeting dates for the 2013, 2014, starting with July 22nd board meeting, so... If there's any questions on anything, let me know. Anything else anybody has? Matt, need a motion to adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry, I have one more thing. Is there anybody, any visitors wish to address the board about any agenda, non-agenda topic, any topic at all? Okay. Then, now I need a motion to adjourn. Thank you, John. In a second. Thank you, Steve. All in favor, say aye. Aye, vote. Thank you.